And citizens and applicants, we are going to start this meeting. It's five o'clock on the twenty-first of October. Planning Commission of Sumner County. And we'll start with the invocation. Mr. Stroll, would you give us an invocation, please? Sidney, as you're doing your first meeting, would you lead us in the lead?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Your may be seen. First, do we have the approval of September minutes? Do we have any corrections just from Mr. Belcher?
Page ten, third paragraph down, second sentence. I believe has the word set, S-E-T. I think it's supposed to be S-A-T.
I'm sorry, which paragraph is it?
Third paragraph, second sentence. Spell check.
Any other person? Anybody else? I have received a motion to approve. Okay, do we have any motion? Commissioner Miller, a second. Mr. Issa, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass it again, honestly. Approval of the October twenty-twenty-five, which I have no changes for. So move for Commissioner Miller. Second, Commissioner Issa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on. As is my habit, we'll save the public comments until after the powerpoint presentation by Sidney and the halls in your court, man.
All right, the first agenda item is going to be planning commission resolution twenty-twenty-five-oh-one, and that's related to flood elevation changes. There was a work study section where this was discussed at Creighton Link. And so before you now is the resolution to amend the requirements at chapter ten, section ten of the county's only resolution provisions for flood hazard reduction related to raising base flood elevation from one foot to three feet. And this is where the public notification requirements were met. And the background, I won't read this word for word as it's, you know, part of your memo that you received in your packet. But essentially, we evaluate the standards for the flood insurance program. And one of the minimum standards that we currently have in the flood zone A D is that the elevated one foot above the base flood elevation. And we are now proposing to change that to three feet. All right, and this one-foot elevation requirement is the absolute minimum standard allowed by FEMA and TMA. Some jurisdictions, including Sumner County, the city of Galton, have adhered to this minimum. There are other jurisdictions where this three-foot recommendation has come from, such as the city of Hendersonville, the city of Franklin, the city of White House, Metro Nashville, that have adopted the three-feet requirement. So the proposed changes again are requiring that the new construction within that A D zone to be constructed three feet above the base flood elevation instead of the one-foot. And this has been studied for quite some time and is now coming forward before you. This was part of, you may be familiar with the Cotton Town Flood Mitigation Strategy. All right. So the next step, should this body decide to approve it, would be to refer this to the county commission. And it would need to be heard by the legislative committee for two hearings and then placed with a full county commission for a public hearing. If the county commission approves, then it will become effective immediately. And these are the pages from the zoning resolution that will be impacted. And this one is just one page where we're just literally changing the language from one foot to three feet. So here and here. And here are the example motions. The first to approve the county, the planning commission resolution related to amendments from chapter ten and to forward a positive recommendation to the county commission. The second to deny the planning commission resolution related to the amendments and to forward a negative recommendation to the county commission. Or the third is to defer decision on this item in order to obtain additional information or if there's any changes on the fourth, then we would want to defer that.
Thank you. Mrs. Commissioner Miller.
Permission number one to approve the positive recommendation.
We have a motion for number one. Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I, we, we, I'm sorry, Steve.
I have a public comment. You got it.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Do we have any public comments on the list? Mr. Flannin?
I was shooting up that I was not in mind, not about those.
Okay, okay, so.
No, I don't have any comments.
Is there anybody who has comments on this elevation change for Flannin? All right. We have a second to the motion by Commissioner Holmes. So now we have questions.
I've asked this question in the past about the studies or any study that assured this could be, or at least a reasonable assurance, that raising the one-foot requirement to three-foot is going to be good enough. Now, I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny that three-foot would be better than one-foot based on what we see in the county over the past, recent past. But I would be at the least barring any studies that could be presented to me or talked about tonight, I just cannot be good faith and say three-foot is good enough. And I've said before, for rectitude, go back, I think the minimum ought to be five-feet. And I, part of my farm is in a very raw place, so I know that we need to know construction there at a five-feet. I know that. But I'm just saying it's hard for me to vote something, and I don't have facts or, I mean, or at least a reasonable assurance from somebody with that expertise that three-foot would be enough. Thank you.
We've discussed this multiple work studies and multiple times, and I know that the everything title, Marshall's name on it. He was the engineer then, now he's the funding director, but I remember that he gave some input on this as well and felt that three-feet was sufficient. And it's, I'm not an engineer, it's not my expertise, but I do trust the judgment of a previous director, Mr. Resseth, in our. What is your, how do I, what do I have? Sidney, and so, I mean, we discussed this for months, so I am completely comfortable with it.
Mr. Belcher.
Just to ask a question, because I had a similar thought to Mr. Stroll when I was reviewing this. And just ask my comrades, just to bear with me for a minute. With how they've been studying, Marshall, done, and where I'm going with this is that, to give you an example, if three-feet would have prevented fifty percent of the floods that have occurred up to this point, but an extra foot would have prevented ninety percent of them, then that extra foot is worth millions. So I'm just asking you a question.
Right, it's a hard question to answer. Really, the only thing that we have is what feet maximum in the flood maps. I mean, there's detailed studies. In some areas, they're less detailed, in other areas, and try to quantify, you know, at least in those areas, whether it's three-feet or five-feet, the percentage of flooding that would not have occurred, it's all about how it's impossible to have that. I didn't really sort of try to, I can't help it, or other agencies to try to find that out, but certainly, like, is, you know, three-feet is better for the way we have it. Obviously, but it's more of the assignment percentage to, you know, to try to quantify would be, you know, must probably, five-feet still.
Any other questions? I, like Mr. Stroll, Mr. Belcher, have wondered, in fact, we've discussed the situation, and it would be, it would be nice to be able to quantify it, because if you think that, as Mr. Belcher said, five-feet would give you another fifty, seventy-five percent savings on a house in a flood situation, if there was a way to measure that, and if FEMA or some other organization had some sort of metrics that would do that, you know, the, to live in a house, two-feet is cheap compared to what a total loss in a flood would be. And we have some severe flooding problems in this county, and they seem to be increasing. So, I mean, we, we can, we could discuss this, or, Marshall, what do you think your chances of getting some sort of metrics on that would be?
I know, and I could go wrong about this, but I think five-feet would be the highest in Milton City, but I think Metro is, I think Metro's four-ke. And I believe they are the highest, I believe, considered county in Milton City, so five-feet would be obviously about that. I don't know, I'd say that there'd be a slim chance that I'd have any real good metrics on what that is. I mean, I could certainly find, find out before, we could move forward with three-feet tonight and certainly between now and legislative, I would have that answer. If there was any information out there, I think it'd be pretty easy to find what it was, but just, I don't think there, I don't think there is.
Commissioner Miller.
I mean, I just think it's unpredictable. Like, I mean, we have areas like Everdropdale that we've discussed at Link that, you know, five years ago never flooded, and now it's a river. I mean, I don't think that the data is out there with all the growth in the cities, white house skeletons, et cetera, et cetera. I just, I think it's unpredictable, and I just don't think that the data is out there. I think we have, in my opinion, in my opinion, only one person, I just think we've exhausted this and, like, go from one-foot to three-foot, I mean, that's, you know. So it's a lot more, I think, that that is sufficient, and then if Marshall finds some data six months down the road, and was like, oh my gosh, you know, we need, you know, but I mean, like you said, the major sport, but thought that is the most you could go, I think that's getting a lot tested, so.
Yeah, and truly, it's, it's, you can't determine that, I mean, ten-feet might not be enough.
Right, it's a town, which you know what I'm saying, so this really only applies to areas that are mapped.
Right.
Right, that we have detailed studies, and that's the majority of the county does not have a detailed study. And so it's helping, obviously, about doing this, but to really have a good handle on it, we'd have to, in matter of extreme economy, it's a tall, tall order to do that.
Commissioner Miller, do you have a, okay. Mr. Stroll.
While we're on the subject, Sidney or Marshall, where are we at? I mean, we were going to ask for a flood study up there in Everdropdale, and we requested that from this day today, or where are we at? And it was a transition, Josh was on in the city to make sure that, and so can we double check where we're at on that and get that going as well?
Yes, so the core, I don't know from this, but right now we're scheduled for July next year, we'll have that, so I'll look at from that date, but that's what I've been told.
Thank you.
Mr. Stroll.
I definitely agree with the comments that was made by me just a moment ago. I don't have any objections to the comments at all. What I would like to say, the past year and a half, we have earned, I hopefully, at least the way I said it, respect and reputation, that when we make a recommendation to the full commission, we've got a diverse group of people on the full commission. It's prudent and reasonable for each of us on this committee to ensure that we try to dot the i's and cross the t's, minimize the discussion at the full commission level as put before the vote. I'm just saying that the questions I posed tonight will be asked a lot more than I'm going to pick apart. If we answer that for them prior to looking for a full vote, I believe the full commission will be at ease, because when we make a full recommendation, we've got a good reputation and a good track record, not perfect, but a good track record. And that's the reason I'm mentioning this today. I cannot disagree that three-foot is better than one. I believe that is. If it's a situation where it's really affecting something that we know that's going to be developed in their future, not that anything's come to us, but if it did, then I could say my time is of the essence. I do not have any knowledge of that. So why not take the time? You know, nobody says that we have, you know, have to, don't be the county in the state of Tennessee that has the highest elevation. We already know, ladies and gentlemen, that FEMA maps, even though they are, we have, are not that good. We saw that from Northwoods in Texas, we thought the inaccuracies and the political finagle out there, I'm not saying that's happened here at all. That's my only comments, because it's going to get into a very deep dive discussion with the full commission, especially when you say, when you tell the full commissioner that, well, we don't really have any doubt, but we feel good about it. If I was commissioner, I'd be pulling the flag, but thank you.
I agree with that, I see what you're saying, and the commissioner will tear apart. We'll have anything from why change it's been fine at a foot forever, to three-feet's going to cost a lot more to build a house, to why don't we go with five-feet, why don't we go with seven-feet? I think it's for that reason that if Marshall can find some metrics, because I think three-feet, at this point, I have no reason to believe that it's anything but arbitrary. And so we can either defer the month, we can go ahead and vote it and see what Marshall comes up with in the meeting, or we can make an amendment to the motion to increase if that's, that's our prerogative to do, so I'm.
It has to be reading. We haven't mentioned this anymore.
Yeah, we have a, we have a motion in a, yeah, we have a motion in a second, so unless I see somebody wanting to make an amendment, we will go ahead and vote on that motion. Okay. Mr. Belcher.
I'd like to amend it to number three, to defer the month.
You'd like to defer the month, okay, so we will go ahead and vote on the amendment to defer the month. All in favor of deferring it a month?
It's a separate motion.
It's a separate motion? Okay, so it's given.
Yeah, we deal with the first motion first and dismiss it before.
Okay, I thought we dealt with amendments before we dealt with the amendment. Okay. You say so.
I mean, it's the exact opposite of the first.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we're, we have a motion in a second on, I have number one, all in favor?
Aye.
Kathy, why don't you do your own call?
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Stroll?
No.
That's just three to two. Okay. All right. I have two on the agenda. Sidney, it is Sumner County Regional Planning Commission Resolution Regarding Shipping Containers as Residents, is that right?
Yes. So this was presented to you in a work study session, I believe, about two months ago. That was essentially a resolution that the Sumner County Regional Planning Commission related to proposed amendments to the zoning resolution establishing regulations for the use of shipping containers. And currently, those are not permitted and have been prohibited by the Health and Safety Board. The Construction Board Appeals has looked at these and had some difficulty with enforcing them, and so they have decided to put forth a resolution to try to regulate them. And so that's what we're looking at tonight, is the language on, that would outline how that's going to be done. This is the public notification, or those criteria were met. So I would get a little ahead of myself here, but in recent years, shipping containers for residential storage and other accessory purposes has increased significantly in the county. And while shipping containers offer affordability, durability, and flexibility for property owners, they also present unique regulatory challenges related to aesthetic safety, property values, and compatibility with the existing residential development patterns. I didn't mean this one yet. The county's current regulations do not allow shipping containers to be used or placed on a permanent basis in any residential zone. This prohibition is difficult to enforce, given the size of the county's planning region and the county's investment enforcement activities, which currently stands at one full-time employee in the codes department that's assigned to enforcement responsibility for the entire county, which is three times larger than all the cities in Sumner County combined. And so, as they've been looking at the regulations, this is one of the areas that they thought with clear, without clear standards, the unregulated placement of these structures may negatively impact the surrounding properties, contribute to visual clutter, be a enforcement challenge, and potentially produce public safety concerns. So in response, the county building and codes staff, working with planning and engineering, has studied best practices and come up with the regulations that were in your packet. So, some special exception reviews, the, so here you are. Shipping containers placed on residential properties will require prior approval by the planning and engineering department as an administrative special exception that's determined by our department rather than going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Subject to applicable, what's there? Subject to applicable regulations in terms of design. And then, any shipping container proposed as a dwelling, whether that be primary or accessory, must receive special exception approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The design standards, shipping containers may not be permanently placed on residential lots less than forty thousand square feet. Shipping containers located within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of a property home or visible from a public right-of-way must meet design standards, requiring encapsulation of exterior metal walls with pre-approved materials colors matching the primary structure and elevation requirements for stability and crawl space access. Use specific requirements, the accessory use, whether that's storage, shed, workshops, et cetera, is it going to be used for business, accessory dwelling units, permanent primary dwellings, underground storage, or storm shelters. And so, these are all the standards that were addressed in the resolution that was in your packet. In addition to that, there's some other regulations that say that they cannot be placed within the floodway. That is true now, although, you know, speaking with TMA, they're not actively enforcing that or requiring that the county do that, although we all know that in the event of flood, then, you know, then that's a problem, a legal matter. Right, that's right. Architectural design requirements for permanent dwellings, permanent dwellings utilizing shipping containers must be designed by Tennessee laws and architect and engineer and meet specific minimum square foot standards. So this is some draft language this year, it's very hard to read on the screen, but that essentially authorizes the staff to make special exception approvals in this instance in 120 C A, that were passed in July of this year. And this is extremely difficult to, to go through. This is essentially what you covered in your work study session, that outlines the specifics of which department is responsible for reviewing and approving which portion of these. So the planning department in essence will be looking at the use associated with it and the placement of it on property. Any design determinations are going to be made by the building and codes director. And again, you can see the language on the accessory dwelling unit, must go before the Board of Zoning Appeals. So these are just outlining the procedural aspects of it and delineating who's responsible for which portion of it. And again, more language regarding the design, very specific design criteria that was put forth. And here are the example motions to approve the resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two and forward a positive recommendation to the Sumner County Commission, to deny a planning commission resolution, and forward a negative recommendation, or three, to defer a decision on this item in order to obtain additional information.
Do we have a list for census design? We don't, nobody is, nobody's here ready. Okay. All right. Questions? Mr. Belcher? Okay, sorry.
So we can, I'm just going to make a motion so we can open up discussion. So one, make a motion to approve number one.
Okay, number one by Commissioner Miller. Do you have a second? A second by Commissioner Holmes. Okay, Mr. Belcher, do you have a question yet?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had asked this question when we were reviewing this in the work study. The word encapsulation, I don't know whether this is Sidney directed to you or to Marshall. I had asked the question whether or not that was defined anywhere in the document, and I'd like to ask that question again, because. I'd like to ask that question again, because I think this is going to save a lot of headaches for this department down the road if there's not a definition for what it means, and it should be added. So, that's my first question, and a few others.
And what's not added in this edit, I believe that that is something that came out of the codes department language with the construction board.
Well, once again, I think it's going to save headaches down the road if we include that in this. I had also asked, one of the prior slides you put up there, that requires that it must be designed by a Tennessee licensed architect and engineer, and I asked the question, why it was both? Did we get an answer to that question?
Again, that comes from the codes department regulations when they're talking about the approval of these. It's similar to tiny home or mobile home. It's a, has to do with the manufacturing off-site that then is moved, and they have to have a third-party engineer approval, although I'm not sure about the architecture portion of that.
Yeah, just that, that's kind of baffles me, just why it's requiring both. It's just going to cost citizens more when they decide to put one in. There's a statement under, it might be easier to refer to the page number in our packet for the language, from page two twenty-five. IMIX states shipping containers placed on developed parcels contained existing homes shall have the same pitch, materials, and design of the house. So, does that mean that it's a shipping container in name only? If you use the same, you know, I'm not concerned about the pitch, but same materials and design. Are you building a small house instead of using a shipping container, or are you using a shipping container? I'm confused.
Essentially, that's a great question. So, again, this came from the codes department in terms of the design standards and all the criteria you find here, but you're essentially correct. The county only has design requirements on huts and accessory dwelling units permitted as a special exception. And in this case, they're treating this much like they would a mobile home or a tiny home. And so, that gets into some other complicated layers of things, because mobile homes are currently not permitted. But part of the other requirements they have here is that it has to be over five hundred square feet and essentially be constructed as if it was an on-site stick-built house. So, what you're asking in terms of design and in terms of the reality of how this thing is going to be built, it essentially is going to have to be built as if it was on a permanent foundation, over five hundred square feet, like a typical home, except that we're not getting much of the two-material regulation outside of saying it has to be encapsulated in the middle.
But, it says same materials and design, so...
Right, and so then that's, right.
And I guess, you know, my point is that it sounds like it's written to where if you set up shipping containers under property, you basically then have to build a house around it, which is in that kind of defeating the purpose of using the shipping container, so I'm really confused.
Yeah, and again, that's talking about treating it as if it was a dwelling structure. It's not for the storage uses. This is when you're using it as a residence, then it has to look like it. So, our current ADU standards also say that an ADU has to match the primary dwelling visually or get an exception on that from Board of Zoning Appeals if it's going to be different. So, understand where you're coming from.
I don't want to interrupt you, interrupt John, and I think she's right. This is if they're going to use it as a dwelling, not if they're going to use it as a workshop or a, literally for storage or something like that. That's if you want to make it, like, you know, people are taking shipping containers and turning them into homes, or just like they're doing with home parks, kind of the same thing. So, that's if needs to match the house that it's going to actually be the place to live. Because at first, my first look, I'm like, well, this is way too much, governed every routine regulation, but then, you know, if I lived in the city and, I mean, I live on a, somebody was literally living there through, if you're using this storage, then you don't have to do all that. So, but I'm going to change my motion from approval to defer, so that we can maybe write down all the questions and revisit this next month, because I think there's a lot of questions and things like that, and I think that every marshal can actually help us as well if they have some questions here, and maybe get those answered.
This is second, good with that? Okay. Kathy, go ahead, Mr. Issa.
I actually agree with Commissioner Miller's proposal there. I was concerned here where it says designer encapsulation standards, and at this particular point, it doesn't seem to specify. They're only talking about residential dwellings, where it says two hundred and fifty feet from property line visible from above the right-of-way must meet design standards, requiring encapsulation of exterior walls and, Mr. Belcher's point, what is encapsulation, encapsulation standards, and also with pre-approved materials? What does that mean exactly? What standard would be following, or what document should we be referring builders or residents to their planning to go that route? Does this actually only refer to residential, and does maybe clarify one of those little things? I agree.
Yeah, I think the spirit of the statement is for architectural features to mesh the houses, and I don't see that, at least in my exit, has anything to do with the use of that container. So, yeah, I think we probably need to tighten up the vernacular a little bit on some of this stuff, and we can do that at home, and then maybe next month on a work session, we can dig into it a little bit. Mr. Strong, you want to come in?
Yeah, I'm kind of like Mr. Belcher. I may have a couple comments, but I'll just hit on being a, we're, we're, possibly. I support shipping containers. I support the complex containers. I really do. There's a lot of them, and just the shipping containers that, they're more secure than most stick-built containers or storage sheds, and they're safer, they serve excellent fallout facilities for people either underground or underground. So, that's my position right there. I've talked to a few people about this. I guess what irritates me a little bit is the fact that we've got to throw out the county and we ain't got nothing about. All you've got to do is go over there two mile radius of where I live, we probably have the majority of them, to be honest with you. That's many pages Tennessee, by the way, if you want to come up and look at them. We've got all kinds of different styles, shapes, and designs. But saying that, there's a couple things. When we talk about permanent dwelling, and permanent dwellings is the overall reach and number of statement, and it says primary accessory, I think we really need to go back and look at that. When we first started looking at this, I didn't even have in my mind that we were going to be addressing primary structures for, okay? This is strictly shipping containers for storage. That's how I took it that we were approaching this. So, where primary came in, people live out of, that changes the game rules considerably. So, I think we need to maybe separate that. We don't need, at least there are people up there wanting to store stuff and use them in shipping containers, and they really shouldn't at least do it by code. And they shouldn't have to wait to come up with a full-blown primary residential development code. I mean, that's asking a lot, to be honest with you. Because in this, the only thing I'll mention, it says that, page two twenty-six, paragraph H, says the following special warrant shall apply. And it says, whether primary or accessory, there's some things in here that just doesn't make sense. If it's a, the way it's written right now, if it's accessory, it said the shipping containers must be a minimum of three shipping containers, container, two container, on and on. I wouldn't think somebody wouldn't use something in their backyard, need at least three, two to three of those shipping containers. I mean, we pass something like this, we'll be a laughing spot in Southern County. So, there again, I think of the residential storage of ninety days, my question is why? Why can't we get a certificate of logging to see within forty-five days? I don't understand why an individual that lives next to or shipping containers has to wait three months for somebody to either be in the ones or not in the ones. That's three months. We need to do better than that. When we, when we're protecting the persons who want to put the shipping container there, we need to protect the rights and privileges of the people that live next to or the storage containers, say. So, I'd like to explain that we can do a better job on reducing that. I'm not going to get into the minimum crawl space access. Engineers know what eighteen inches is. I don't get it. I don't know if I can have eight, ten, twelve, but eighteen's what it is. I'd like somebody to explain to me, because most people cannot crawl in eighteen-inch space. Most people. There are a few who can.
I can.
Okay. You're a great chef. Okay, the next thing, it says, under no circumstances should shipping containers be utilized for storage on vacant lots less than five acres. Why? I don't get it. We just changed, I mean, I was a big opponent of having a minimum building lot size five acres. Obviously, they got reduced to ten point three three hundred, but why don't we stay consistent then? Why would we say five acres here? Why can't they put it on to two point three three acres, five thousand square foot? Just asking that, proposal.
If I may, that's consistent with current accessory building standards, where lots five acres or more may have an accessory building without a primary dwelling there. But if you have less than five acres, then there does have to be a primary structure over there, that's your building on. So, that's consistent with our end.
Oh, that makes sense. Thank you for that clarification. With that, I've got a lot more points, but I think I've covered enough just to decide where I stand. I support shipping, certainly. I understand why we need to make, if you don't think that ugly is ugly, come over there and look at our show of shipping containers. They're ugly. So, thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
If we're giving, I just want to be considerate, because it does cost money to notice this, and it's a lot of staff time, so I really want to be considerate. It's not drop the ball on us. Let's everybody email their questions and get with the two marshals in Sidney, and let's get this mapped out, you know, the language that we need, so that we can be ready for next month, because, yeah.
So, these are drawn, then we would be given to you to get it on agenda next month?
So, public notice is ten days prior to the meeting, but because of the paper, the paper deadline is Monday of typically the week prior, so I'd have to look at a calendar to say that I can email that to you as well.
Okay, then if you would do that, then we will know when the deadline is.
Sure. Because that's a big question, would you like to see this come back before you as a work study? At work, would you like to be, try to be prepared to move it next month?
Seems like we're trying to cram along into one month. So, I think, Mr. Issa?
With the proposal, I think we do provide all the, you know, direction we can, email. We need to look at it during work studies, see if we can come to a wonderful list at that point, and then have to decide how to go forward at that meeting. Just to be adjusted for.
Commissioner Miller?
Just remember, it's got to go through legislative twice, and then to a commission. So, we're talking, we're going to be five, six months out if we push it. And the whole reason that this is even a thing is because I had more than one person reach out to me, asking me why can't I do this. So, you know, we can keep kicking the can, never, like we do with the twenty-third plan, but like we just keep kicking the can and kicking the can, so let's just, let's get it.
Okay, if, Mr. Belcher?
I've never seen a drive as big.
Don't hate me for this. Can we call a special session to meet between now and next meeting next month, so that we can go over this one item and hash out everything?
We would not, would we, we would notice it on the website, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to notice it, because it's a work session. We wouldn't need to notice it.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we can do that. I think we need a calendar now.
It needs to be noticed, it doesn't have to be in the queue.
While you're deliberating on that, I do want to mention this for your consideration. Some of the language in there about it being used as a residence is because if there's anything on somebody's structure, they're going to try to convert it into a living space, and that's the reality of what we see. You would be surprised. And we, we received multiple calls about people wanting to use these as greenhouses, as ballhouses, hotels, you name it, people thought of it. So, that's why I'm in approving, because we're going ahead and looking at language, as if it does get moved forward, and what we're doing to help, I say regularly, but have to kind of keep it to where it's visually less impactful.
If we stay, if we, if we stay focused on shipping containers as storage right now, then the answer to primary residence is no, right now. So, the majority, I don't blame anybody else, but what I say most people use these things as for shipping containers. Yes, I'm sure so. But see, that answer really is no, it's not, you can't do it. We might get there. That's for a, I just believe that we need to stay with the accessory structure for storage, because I don't think we would solve, that amount may be a little large on primary residence. I'm just saying, thank you.
Kathy, can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
I do want to change, Ron, but have you, I'm realizing, have you seen the prices of twelve hundred square foot, two bigger, one and a half thousand, it's four hundred thousand dollars. This is an alternative to the younger generation, where they can, you know, if their parents have two acres land, and they can take, you know, an acre, take a shipping container, and they can live by their parents and have health and have village and raise their children. And, I mean, it's literally, I've had multiple people reach out, and that's why we're here. So, I get it, it would be great, it was just for storage, but, you know, everybody talks about it's not the very much of a possibility for affordable housing, but it's a problem. They're not allowed at all. They're everywhere. Sure, it would be grandfathered in and started there, but like, I mean, it's a need and it's a problem, and we have to solve it, is why we're here. So, I think that we need to, you know, get, I think we need to, Marshall from codes as well, to, if he could, if we had a special call meeting, or whatever, if we could have him there as well, for that, his opinion and aspect of that. I mean, he's, he is very, very available. He will answer to that anytime you call him as well, as, as Marshall in Sidney, so I think we just need to kind of go through this and get our questions and hammer it out and move forward.
Well, I'm looking at a calendar, and Mondays are bad for recommissioners. I think we need to get past October, and the first Tuesday, the fourth is Election Day, and the second Tuesday, the eleventh, is Veterans Day. Thursday would work for me. We could, I think Sidney, the sixth, is as late as we can. We could, I think, Sydney, the sixth is as late as we could. Will that even work for the newspaper?
For the study session, would it need newspaper advertising?
You'd be able to get it for the next...
For the next meeting, yeah.
Because if our next meeting is the nineteenth...
Eighteenth.
It would not, the sixth would, it would not work. The fourth is the latest it could be, right? Because you've got to get it in by Tuesday. By Monday, the third. All right, we're talking...
Wait until next week?
Yeah, we're talking, the only way, the only time we could do it would be next week, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday. So, again, I'll be in town, but that's... What was anybody's thoughts on that?
If we did it next week, that would be Tuesday or Wednesday. I have three sources regarding Monday.
Okay, so Monday's out. So, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, or Thursday, the thirtieth? Wednesday? Okay, what about you, Ron? Chrissy, do you need Wednesday? Deborah? Okay. And so, Marshall, you good for Wednesday? Sydney, Chad? So, could you get ahold of Marshall, right? See if you can make it? Okay, so...
When's the earliest, Tom, people can do?
I've got all day, so... And you're good, you're in town? You work? Five is sure to be good for you.
Yeah, I could do five, much earlier than that would be wrong.
Okay, so five, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth at five?
We need to go along that road.
Trying to think how to make the motion. I guess I make the motion to have a special call meeting?
Yeah, we don't, we need to go along that road.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So, we've changed, Commissioner Miller's changed it from number one to number three, and we have a second that's acceptable to Commissioner Holmes. Kathy, go ahead and do the roll call.
Sure. Mr. Straw?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous, and we will have a meeting next Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, at five, here. All right, next item. Is Ever Acres, final plat? Go ahead.
Sure, it's... All right. Ever Acres is located on Fleming Road and Highway two fifty-nine. And this is something that's not typically brought before this commission, but there's been a couple of instances where it has. In this case, what they're asking to do is they're dedicating right-of-way along Fleming so they can meet the requirements from PDU to extend the water line along here. And what they're proposing to do, they have fourteen lots that are all over five acres that are proposed for the sixty-six point seven acre tract. The current zoning is rural preservation and the utilities, all the lots are proposed to be on subject systems. The owner is Sunset Investment Partnership, and the surveyor is Richard Graves, who's in attendance this evening. The project developer will be Stratton Taylor Builders. And this property is a rural place type in the county's comprehensive plan. And again, the plat purpose is to plat the utility extension along Fleming Road here. And so, as part of that process, they are, the property owner currently goes to the center line of Fleming Road, and they're backing that up and dedicating right-of-way to the And so, here's an aerial view of the property that we're looking at, this large parcel And you can see, I did a little bit of a superimposed property lines over the area. And again, you can see that all of these proposed tracts are all over five acres. And there's the plat itself. And there's an aerial view. This one is the drive along Fleming Road looking north. And this is if you're looking south. This is along Highway two fifty-nine looking to the east. All right, just a couple more comments on this. The letter from the Portland Department of Utilities was in your packet, and they're requiring quite a few upgrades as part of their approval. And the water main is going to be upsized from six inches along Highway two fifty-nine from four inches, and then a six-inch water main along Fleming Road is going, is to be installed. The, this lot does not require, or these lots don't require any detention. There's no drainage, so that's why there's not any construction plans or preliminary plat because there's, that's typically what we're looking at with a preliminary plat as well as topography. Many of these lots are already noted on your plat as critical lots, and so those will be reviewed on an individual basis when they, for a building apartment. Again, there's no proposal of any new streets, and there's right-of-way that's being dedicated to the county as part of this application. And this is taken from that Portland utility letter. And you can see, at the beginning, it was provided in your packet, but you can see where they're going to install and then where they're extending, and then where they had a in lieu of payment right here along White Road. And to back it up and look at what the land use plan is, what it calls for, it calls for rural place type. You can't read that there, but those are large lots, which is what they have proposed. And then, these are the findings of facts in making a determination and essential of the board of management. All right, is it consistent with the intent recognition of a county comprehensive plan? Is it, does the application align with the subdivision regulations? Does it create adverse effects on the adjoining property owners? And then the last one is just that there's not an individual that's going to benefit materially from the approval to the detriment of the public? So, when making your denials or approvals, it's, but those are the conditions to consider while making those. And then, should this be approved, the following plat, the final plat, can then be recorded? And then, once the plat's recorded, then the lots can be sold? And the example motions to find that all of the county's standards are met and to approve the final plat, to deny the final plat due to the noncompliance of the provisions of the subdivision regulations, if denied, please specify what those are. And then, or to defer in order to obtain additional information. And then, there's that note about the state law within sixty months or sixty days. I'll sit there.
Let's go ahead and do the representative of the property. Are there any people wanting to talk on this issue? Go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Brian Harvin, eleven fifty-three Parker's Chapel, Portland.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so if you have any comments, you just hear the answer questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Straw?
Good to meet you. I drove out there earlier this morning. I drove up there earlier this morning. Beautiful place to land. I noticed that the, and Mr. Issa, you mentioned too, it makes sense, that most of these are critical lots, as you just mentioned a second ago, which means each lot will be scrutinized in some capacity. The reason I say that is I don't know about the land, nothing like Mr. Graves does. I mean, he's been surveying for probably a hundred years. And a great guy, doesn't work for me, actually. And I just spent some of these lots, I'm just, just following, it appears like there's some same holes out there, to be honest with you. I don't know that, but it appears to me that there's some same holes.
There's some low spots. I don't think there's any open throats anywhere on them.
Okay, but I just, being that they're critical lots, I don't have an issue because it's going to be scrutinized. And that's to protect the future landlords, so do that just for them. The only question, I'm looking at track fourteen. I drove out there today and, you know, found, found that there's actually a loop around the whole property. You gotta look back to play it, you know what I'm saying? And drove around and I noticed that, am I incorrect in error or am I correct, that there's already been some construction on track fourteen? Or is that the track next to track fourteen?
That would be on fifteen, I believe.
It's on fifteen?
There's no, there's no construction on any of, on any of these lots.
Okay, so fifteen is not part of this, this, the building, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't know for sure. Hardly come there. But I noticed that we've got some water that had abruptly stopped. Looks like there's been nothing done on it, so I just wanted to ask. Thank you, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Issa?
No question, I just want to say I appreciate the size of the lots. I appreciate you respecting the rural area that it's, you know, in fact, places in. I think that's what most of the residents have been asking for, is responsible and really, we have to manage it, and I just appreciate that. So, I just make a motion for number one to have.
Okay, a motion for number one.
I'll say it.
Second, Mr. Straw, questions?
In note number ten concerning the critical lots, designated by the county as critical lots due to presence of an enclosed depression and other factors. Can you define other factors?
When we, when we get to the process of, in turning in, I'm sorry. Richard Graves, it's true, I'm not a hundred years old, so... But I have been surveyed for forty-five years, so. And I started when I was fourteen, so I'll give you a little, forty-seven years, excuse me, I'll give you a little idea of how old I am. When we, we do have some closed depressions. We didn't find any open throats out there, but talking to staff and them being five acres, there's plenty of places to build on. We'll have to adhere to the setbacks on the, on the, those closed depressions, of course. And the soils are out of those, those areas, and we will have a complete site plan and a critical site plan, and that, those requirements that are by, in the zoning regulations, we'd have to adhere to. We're just calling out that whoever buys this, if they build on their own, they'll have to hire somebody, us or somebody else, to do a critical lot plan and adhere to all the regulations of the critical, to meet the criteria of a critical site plan.
Okay, okay, I was just...
Yes.
The other factor is...
Well, like...
I'm not big on vague comments.
It is, it's, it's not really a vague comment, it's just it, it gives the staff in the recorded plat, they can say, well, here's, here's criteria by which you do the critical lot plan. And depending on what the site, what comes up, in those closed depressions, like he's saying, they'll make sure that they don't build anywhere twenty-five foot outside the rim, that kind of thing. Okay?
All right. That's all I have.
Any other questions? I, I have to tell you, I'm a little confused. This, these are five acre lots, and I thought they didn't have to run through us at all?
That's a great question. The TCA requires that if there's going to be construction of a utility, then, or whether that be new or if the extension, then, then the lot has to be planted.
And so, the new water line and the right-of-way for the road was the requirement, but it doesn't need to go through a preliminary plat process?
Right. Typically, what the preliminary plat is encapsulating is the, the topography, and then, if there's going to be drainage requirements or infrastructure, like widening the road or something like that, then that's going to be a little bit of a preliminary plat. But because there's no, not any drainage and the topography's going to be addressed at the individual building apartment level, then the preliminary plat was deemed not necessary in this case.
Okay. I've just told you. Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Straw, you have a question?
No, just kidding.
All three questions. The pond is not a problem. Is that the lowest spot on the property? Hasn't allowed that?
Yeah, I think it has an outlet. Yeah, it outlets, it's got a overflow and it flows to the north.
Okay.
Yeah, but we've, we've got the buffer on there, on the pond. Right there, you can see that, where that, where the, it flows to the north, you see the water, see how the grass is green, it's going out of the pond.
On the other side?
Yeah, it's going to the north right there. You see that?
Yeah, then it goes all the way to the street, I understand.
It goes up in, yeah, they see the woods on the, on the property line? It goes on up in that direction.
Okay, and that's somebody else's property, water rights and all that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, it's like, this has been a great farm line, nice and flat. Hate to lose it, but it looks like it's going to be a great project. If we have no other questions, we have approval with number one. Kathy, if you will do the roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Beldner?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Straw?
Yes.
And Commissioner Miller?
Kathy, passes with four and one. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And we have older farms, preliminary plat in my district. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, this is a preliminary plat. What they are proposing are eight residential lots on fifty-seven point seven three acres. And you can see that it is, what they're proposing are two point three acre tracts on essentially eighteen, below over eighteen of those acres with thirty-eight point eight eight remaining subdivided up here. The property is located along Greenfield Lane, which is considered to be a major collector, requiring a hundred and fifty feet of road width for each lot. And it's in the rural preservation zoning district. It's owned by Vinnie Brooks and Patterson, who the number is Fleming Holmes. The project designer is Curry Surveying, and public waters to be provided by Castings Springs, but... Betpage Utilities. And you can see, all right, this provides a little bit of an aerial view in context with what's around it. The way that's in the acre subdivision here, and then the same developer is building some homes across the street. Now, you're on a little bit closer view of the property and the surrounding area. And again, my attempt at superposing the plot on the property. You can see these lots here. There's a fifty-foot access here, um, which, just for potential sake, could result in one tract over five acres, or provide access to all of this remaining thirty-eight acres. And then there's an additional approximately a hundred and fifty feet right here, or to be chunked off in the future. None of that is proposed at this time, but just wanted to make you aware. And then, um, here is the image of the plaque, the preliminary plaque, with the topography included. And you can see each of these lots do meet that hundred and fifty feet requirement. And that is the soils map. I want to go back, one more slide here. It was cut off, but there is, you can see on the plaque that you have provided there's an existing hydrant, and they're proposing another hydrant. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't. So, it is in the packet there, that we install another hydrant there. The public utility is provided by Castellini Springs Betpage. The letter of their, um, availability for the hydrant and the eight homes was included in the packet. There's a six-inch water line located along the lot frontages. The, um, fire protection is to be provided by the relevant volunteer fire department, and the approved septic map was submitted in your packet. Additional information, um, there, there was adequate driveway dedicated along Greenfield Lane, and the, um, construction EPSC drainage plans have been provided for the project. Now, I just want to kind of go back to what we were discussing earlier. Design requirements are not, uh, the county doesn't have design requirements in terms of primary dwelling, so these architectural images weren't to be the basis of your decision, but the builder did want to just show that this is, what they're proposing is compatible with what's around it in terms of the architectural style. The county comprehensive plan, this, again, this is a rural place type, which are larger lots. And again, these are the regulations for, um, making your determination on whether or not, um, the subdivision regulations are met. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Does it, um, create adverse effects upon major unit property owners? Uh, is this going to be detrimental to the public? And, um, does it comply with the standards for the zoning that it is being proposed in? As far as next steps, um, they will need to obtain construction plan approval from the county engineer, as well as required permits from TDEC. They'll need to file, uh, file a plaque from the planning commission within the allowed time, and then after that plaque is approved by the planning commission, it'll need to be reported, and lots may be sold. And that leads to the example motions. The first is to find that all county requirements are met and approve a preliminary plant for older farms contingent upon obtaining those permits from TDEC, and, um, then, uh, and then the second is to deny the plant based on non-compliance with the county subdivision regulations. Please state what those are here. And the board to defer in order to obtain additional information.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, people here to speak for or against the project? Kathy?
Good evening, I'm Jordan Flunning, Flunning Homes. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We've tried to deliver good quality homes in the area. Uh, we've built several others just on the other side of Greenfield, uh, and the area is just very close to our home, and that this is just an extension thereof with the same like-kind quality for good people around here. So, we had, uh, some sample pictures, some restricted covenants, and we feel like we meet the regs as far as width, uh, square footage, letters of availability for service for water, um, and septic, and, uh, an additional hydrant for proposal. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Can you hand around? I'm sure they will be. Okay, do, uh, we have a motion, questions? Mr. Strong? I leave it.
Mr. Flunning, uh, uh, you please, because I know my ass, my thing to ask you. But, but first of all, I want to say that you built new law of the homes.
Thank you.
The curb bill was outstanding.
Thank you.
I don't owe many builders that make the builders yours, and I'm pretty fair. And I've seen the work, and I said this has nothing to do with you, your building. I see that you're here representing, but also seeing the plaque that the owner developers, at least their other people, ain't here today. So, are you, you're not the owner?
No, I'm not the, I have the property under contract with their blessing to be here presenting on this behalf, I believe.
So, you're representing them?
Yes, there was a letter that, uh, the owner signed on behalf.
Okay. Uh, hold, let me state that this gets...
Board Commission developer made some comments in the recent past.
I've been, been on this committee now for about a year and a half, okay? And, uh, and it seems like every development that's come up in the, the rural area, or areas that we, we, we have on the site, is things have been improved in the past. And then we find out, we learn from our mistakes, and we say we're not going to let this happen again. And I've got that. I see that you really got nineteen lots here, but four of them I know, because I checked, really, really, they've been approved years ago. I, by the way, they look good in the woods, but four lots of...
Oh, thank you. Yeah, they're, they're...
The ones we're building now.
Uh, yes, I understand, I'm going to do a couple of that, yeah. And, uh, so we've got nineteen lots here, wasn't it? And as I, as I look at this plan, and look at the big, big picture, uh, we do have a potential water problem here. And I know you've got your, you know, there's a water problem here. There's a big water problem here, because we barely meet the minimum standard of twenty-five hundred. I think the number was five oh two. I think the engineer told me when I talked to the patent, what, they made it, checked it twice, made it for a thousand. But they made it, and I, and I trust that man. So, that's good. They don't have anything to do with it. But we got a water problem here, guys. And I'm looking at this, and I see a fifty-foot even going back. All right, this gets into some things to Mission Miller, or I don't know Chicago things, I forgot it, but I did. If we got to look to the future, we, I'm looking in the back of this thing, and I'm seeing thirty-eight acres. It's funny, many haven't seen developments and parcels come together, and this is not, this doesn't even say phase one, which kind of surprises me, this ship's not phase one. Because you're going to develop that back here, but you're going to probably tell me, "I don't know for sure what I'm going to do," because you don't know. Is that correct?
I'd love to get a pre-sale and do a custom.
Don't, don't, yeah, don't know. But we have thirty-eight acres there. Now, what's the minimum we're going to have for two, to be an entryway next to it? Uh, is it, is it thirty-two home or twenty?
Thirty homes.
Thirty homes. Okay. So, let's just say, because we don't know this, we don't know if this is always tracked up as like this, which by the way, they're beautiful tracts.
Thank you.
Prime lane, prime lane. And so do we need, as a committee, to be prudent and say, "Hey, because we're not being told, and this is not planted as a couple five acre tracts in the back, it's prudent for us as a committee for the future to say, hey, we need to have an interest, we got to have an interest, we got to have two interest places." Now, guys, ladies and gentlemen, we have demanded this with other developers and builders coming in. Am I correct? This is the first development since I've been here that this has come up, because that's required. Because the developer's resident right here, and he's representative tonight, had told us what they're going to do. We don't have a plant, we don't want to have a phase one. It doesn't say phase one on this plan at all, but it is going to be a phase one. Because he's going to come back before long and do something, I don't know what it is. But I think it's prudent that we require this plaque for the developers, the owners of this land, to have a fifty-foot even on one spot, fifty-foot, and meet the same criteria that we're requiring for these other developers. All I do is reference back, uh, Beach High School here, Shakalaka. So, this has nothing to do with the builders, just doing everything that we've asked them to do for the best of our time, I mean, air, probably a whole lot better. Because if you haven't been by here, ladies and gentlemen, you go by six homes. These pictures do not do justice, uh, compared to what you've seen when you drive by that property. So, I've got to do that, so, that's what I'm saying, so, I'm...
Your concern isn't the project that I'm presenting here? Your concern's about the balance of the project?
The, 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 yes, the project as a whole. All I'm looking at, I'm not looking at, I know we meet the criteria of the lots.
We don't plan to do infrastructure for the balance of the, we don't plan to do a road and infrastructure and horizontal improvements and anything for the balance of the thirty-eight acres.
I, I hear you, but we don't know if the future's going to hold. So, if, if, if we don't know for sure, why not go ahead and track out fifty-foot even there on that hundred and fifty-foot roadway for that future expansion if it happens?
The planning comments for, for us to call out was to put the bounce track up. So, when we submitted this, they said, "Please add," which we added a secondary one saying, "This is the bounce track up." There was no other comment requiring anything else. And we feel like everything else meets...
Yeah.
The hundred and fifty-foot width and the square footers in the lots.
So, and, and I got you, and this is really not for you to answer, is it much to the, to Sidney? Please address that, because that's a concern I have. It's not, not nothing, the builders are doing everything we're asking for.
So, if I, yes, thank you.
We'll put a motion to a court.
If I may, and any additional subdivision of the land, and there are five acres, would require approval back before this body, as well as if there is a road, you know, if somebody else decides, you know, glows this, decides to go forward with a different route. Any other approval, um, would have to come back before this body and the whole subdivision requirements. So, the, this one has to be evaluated on merit for what's being presented this evening. I think it's wise to consider what the potential could be, but kind of as indicated, that, that access, oh, that'll take later, okay. This access would only allow for a five acre tract. Um, this potentially could be subdivided, or they have a hundred and fifty feet here. But again, anything beyond in the future would have to come back before this body.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know that we can, uh, project, uh, what, what they're going to do. Uh, I, I do have some concerns that, what is the classification of Greenfield Lane?
It's a major collector.
A major collector. And all, I don't know what the requirements are of a major collector. Uh, is, is it common for, uh, properties to have driveways on a major collector? It is okay?
And it's to your comment there, that's why I think this body, I remember when it was done a little bit before my time, had decided to increase those lot widths so that it wouldn't put as many driveways on more heavily traffic roads, to the trace of that.
And we also did a sideline, uh, in our civils, our construction drawings showing the, uh, driveway, you know, A square plus B square equals C square, but you could see good in each way.
Okay.
That wasn't the real math, but some kind of math.
I believe, Sidney, that the balance of the property with that farm and waterway there would, uh, it'll take some pretty serious engineering to, to deal with that. Okay. Mr. Belcher?
Excuse me, um... Piggybacking on one of Mr. Strong's comments about store more. Store more calculations were mentioned in our packet, but I didn't see the calculations in the before development and after development. Has that been made available to the department?
Yes, sir.
There was a... My only other comment is, there's a drawing in the packet titled "General Property Survey" on the XXX property, total area XXX, dah 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 dah. And the vicinity map that's on that page, this is the sheet I'm looking at.
Yes, sir.
It's blank.
The soil map?
Yes. Um, just because I'm a little bit of a stickler, and I think as many folks know... And I realize that this is a preliminary, but, you know, shouldn't there be a little bit more information included in, in the drawing that you presented?
Yes, sir. A hundred percent agree. We would get that updated, I see it on the, uh, map right there from the soil scientist.
And it, it also mentions the XX Civil District of Wilson County?
We do most of our work in Wilson. It's probably copy and paste, I'll make a full period update in.
Okay. I would just suggest that, uh, you go through the drawings and clean up some of the mess.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Do we have three motions?
Honestly, we're spotting a little bit larger, but I don't call it the build, and it disappears to follow all the approval criteria for the fire into the cabinet, so I don't use a motion.
Enter B.
A, clear. Clear. Yeah, clear, here. Motion for number one?
A and B. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Belcher. Any questions on the motion? Okay, Kathy?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Miller?
Yep.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Mr. Strong?
No.
The motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Did we meet the criteria of everything?
It's out of order.
Yeah, we, we're in the process of, uh, the... Yeah, we, we're in the process of, uh, the. Well, we have the other questions.
Just wondering, my members, if this is an administrative area, if the subdivision regulations are met, can easily be approved. If not, you need to state the reason as to why it's not being approved.
Right, right. And Brandon, this is yet focused on. Commissioner Miller?
I'm just wondering, uh, Mr. Belcher had some questions. I think there's a lot of hesitation because there's a lot of some information on, uh, wait on here.
The store more.
The store more, I mean, it's just missing, so I'll go ahead and make a, um, number three, a differ for an estimate so that, um, maybe Marshall can get us all the information and maybe people will feel more comfortable, um, without the information.
Okay, so we have a motion for, uh, three to defer for all month. Do we have a second? Mr. Belcher, a second. Do we have any questions to the motion?
Have a more comment. Could you be specific so that they have to, to bring back for their deferment if it passes?
Certainly, um, well, ordinarily, our packets will include, excuse me, the store more calculations for the property. And maybe that's been submitted and it just wasn't shared with us.
Marshall has them. I believe that you've had them all.
This is not a Q and A session.
No, I'm sorry.
So, uh, I'd like to see the store more calculations. Uh, also, I'd like to see the drawings cleaned up so that it represents this project and not some, uh, other counties or other projects. And, uh, I understand what happens and how it happens, but, uh, I'd like to see the, the package cleaned up.
What's that turn in and just not give it to us? Was that turned in and just not included in the, uh? And we had, we had a changeover here, so we're gonna get, gotta get a little practice.
Who has?
Do we have that?
Mark, for your, your calculations. To be sure.
Okay, so you can't confirm that he needs to receive that, and I'm just not, I was actually thinking about taking one of them, but without store water calculations and, and I guarantee that it's not going to increase, you know, any, or have any issues, I, I do want to continue with, with the deferable, we just need to put it in that and then, you know, they can come up with that.
And in the fact that the plan, I was just asking Mr. Belcher, it's a lot of generic information that hasn't been filled out. So, Mr. Fleming, if you can, uh, I, I think we're gonna probably give a positive vote on, on the deferment for thirty days or July next meeting. If you could, uh, have the engineer, uh, do all the aspects of the site plan in the packet and, uh, we'd give calculations for John to look at, for all of us to look at. I think that might suffice unless, Ron, uh, you had some questions about the water or am I misunderstanding what you said?
I do have a question for the water, but that's nothing they've missed out here. Fleming, it's not an issue. He's, he's properly getting a, a water letter from, from CSB, so that's all he's required.
Okay.
So he is compliant with the due support.
Okay, you have a question?
Any question for you? Is there a possibility to add a C to this approval? And that if the proper documentation was submitted to the county, it meets the requirements, that they would not have to come back and revisit this?
I don't understand.
We have to deal with the deferal part in the meeting.
I don't know that, I don't know that, but I want to say this is a viable option if it's not. Does it just refer?
So you're saying that.
Basically, it said, if the proper documentation satisfies the requirements for the, the, uh, the flood was submitted, this is the county area where we just were providing the information rather than making it wait a month. And if it's not properly submitted, then it would have to, you know, be, be brought back?
Well, I, I, I don't think so because it needs to come back to us anyway. Yeah, yeah, there's a, we, yeah, we need to go with the sample motions, so, uh, Kathy, we do the roll call.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Isa?
No.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Mr. Straw?
Yes.
And Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Okay, so we will defer this till next month. Uh, Marshall, if you can give us the calcs and if Mr. Fleming can get the site plan, uh, with the proper information from the specific land, that will be great. Okay, next time, Sydney.
And so that leads us to our administrative approvals. These are the one or two online applies for flat amendments. Um, and, you know, if you see any that are of particular interest, feel free to let us know, but these are all pretty standard requests that had been made only to something that was on our unusual level or reviewing these around. And so if you don't have any questions, then that leads us to the directors of the.
I don't have any questions. You, Mr. Straw?
This is not, not, I, I think, let's go back to, uh,
No, Brandon.
What about the, uh, back to Tarlof, let the lane expansion there on third one? Really out of that, I didn't see anything.
All, all I know is that the, the builder, Shell Brothers, has put up a sign on thirty-two unit parcel saying home's coming soon. Uh, Marshall may be able to address, where are you going?
Step off.
Okay, may be able, or Sydney, maybe you can address. As, uh, as, as I understand, Shell Brothers has submitted to TDOT uh, their, uh, plan to modify the highway, creating a center lane at Brandonville Road and, uh, slow down shoulders. And I believe they also have, are in the process of redesigning the culvert at the second blow spot that's right about where the old railroad is. Have you received anything yet?
That would all come through Marshall initially, hopefully producing all the information to others.
Marshall? We, we have a question for you. Mr. Straw was asking about Brandonville Road, Shell Brothers. Have you heard anything from the Shell Brothers regarding TDOT or the culvert?
Yes, they're working the plant right now with TDOT, um, lining. They're, they're working with TDOT right now, they're working with lining. They're also working the highway, they're also calling the culvert class on them, so they're, so I think it's, I think it's close. Um, they're not ready to pull it quite yet, but I think it's gonna, it's gonna happen.
Okay.
And I did want to, if I could go back, the, the fourteen hours, why did I tell them?
It would be, yeah.
Oh, okay, we can.
I'm sorry.
It's been there.
Oh, it's been for, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
The latter lane, I'm sorry, the latter lane, we need intersection improvements, what does that include? I'm assuming it's either an intersection with new road road or with volkswagen bike.
Yeah, so, uh, the county has dedicated funds to do a traffic signal at latter lane, um, and. Right, that, that line is very necessary. Because you can't see a corner on that, her, everything else. So the county is committed to that, and, um, Marshall, if you want to speak to it, may I have it out in the panel?
Well, you can imagine this, uh, there's three million dollars just been funded for that project. Uh, we've, we've developed an R F Q to advertise, we're gonna hopefully get that out very, very soon and start the process to select a, you know, surveyor, engineer, designer, go on board, get it designed, and, uh, we're just, you know, the right way needed and get it. So the hope is if we can get it built with the money we have, that'd be terrific. Because if not, uh, then try to talk TMO, TIT, and in construction phase, and, and partner with some of their funding and get it built that way.
TDOT, uh, owns the highway, correct?
Right, this is separate out, uh, of course, latter one's a county, county road. But, you know, you, TDOT's still aware or given, you know, or onboard, onboard with it. And then they'd be part of the process as well.
But do, do they contribute money to it or?
No, uh, right now it's all county funds, but like I was saying, if, if we get to the end and we're trying to build it and we realize it's gonna be a, you know, five-point project, then we'd be asked, we'd ask.
Okay. And that's it.
Is that anything for the president?
Sydney, is that the extent of your director's update?
Motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, can we get an update on twenty-fifty comprehensive plan?
Of course, obviously with Josh leaving, he was a big commitment of that. We, we have a plan in place, um, to keep, keep moving it forward, you know, we're gonna bring Josh on board. Let's get excited, um, to, to help assist staff, uh, you know, with that. And so we're, it's not dead, and we're, we're just gonna have a temporary pause until we can get Josh going on to help us, and so, did see, I think he budgeted at a pretty good place. So we just gotta try to get to a point where we can present it to you guys and, um, and take it, take it back.
Third time long for that?
I, I'll see with Josh this week, um, and get him, just find out how long it would take. And I'll have an idea when we meet, or we're setting, I'll have a, a pretty good idea of how long it'll take to get it ready.
Yeah, because, you know, we, our term is up, you know, in ten months.
Right.
And we're trying desperately to move the ball forward because.
There's a lot of work.
There's a lot, a lot of work to do yet. So, uh, is it, and I don't know even who to ask, this is appropriate for any of us to meet separately with you, Marshall, or with Josh and Marshall, or?
I, I, I think at some point, we'll, we'll talk to Josh, and I think at some point there may be an opportunity for that for, for you guys.
Yeah, because, you know, you know, I think, I think we have lots of ideas. I mean, it's important to me as much as it can be that we create industrial zones uh, to create jobs for the county because we don't have any. And we've, we've got a way, huge imbalance between, uh, citizens and work for citizens. And it's something that I've conversed with, with Josh a lot, and I know that now that we're in transition, I want to make those ideas plain and, and move forward in that direction because that's something we're, we're very, very weak in. And I need to talk to the labor director here. Okay, the planning director has an addition to her, uh, update.
Sure, I think pertinent to this discussion that mentioned. We are updating a lot of our forms and everything to comply with state law for preliminary plats that are listed upon the middle, not approval now. And as part of that, I think I want to mention to this body that there's two separate components. So there's the preliminary plat, which has the topography and everything like that. And then we also ask for the middle, the construction plans, which has a different checklist. Then that's where the drainage calculations come in and the grading that was in that submitted packet and everything like that. As part of preliminary plat approval, the... It says the construction plans must be substantially... Well, actually, that's substantially complete, but the whole packet does not, is not required to be. There are actually two separate middles. It's kind of a and a big. And so that's why in your motions, it says, hey, we're gonna finish having that. Sorry, I'll go back to it, but I just wanted to kind of mention that those are some of the forms that we're looking at revising to make it a little bit more clear and in congruence with the state law changes that say that's to begin at the submitted, not the approval of the preliminary plat.
Yeah, I think I'm a little confused. So in the past, for preliminary plat to be approved and to move forward, we have had traffic studies, we've had flood control studies, we've required water approval and some septic requirements. And so are you telling us that that's going to change now?
Well, so we'll have to evaluate it a little bit differently because the preliminary plat checklist includes like the hot soils, that soils map. It includes the septic area. It includes the plan itself. When a traffic study might be wanted, sometimes that's determined here, those types of things. The construction plans are separate, and those are gonna be your stormwater calculations, the grading, I can't remember the other thing you said, sorry. It's more in the construction checklist phase.
Right, so... So we just approved to defer this for a month. And so if we're going to change rules so that we don't expect what we've had in the past, is that gonna be something that you give us in the future?
So the rule was changed July first by the state. And either which way, a preliminary plat... Trying to figure out how to say this, but a preliminary plat approval is not contingent upon also the finalization of the construction plans.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm at a loss, Steve, as, you know, in my opinion, we voted to defer. In order to change that before adjournment, someone on the prevailing side would have to ask for a revote.
Correct.
I did not vote because I have great ties. So the vote was two to three. Let's see, it was Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Holmes.
For...
Or was it for one? Okay, so someone on the prevailing side would have to ask for a revote. Isn't that right?
Correct.
Okay, so unless we can get that, we cannot reverse what we did. And I can't make a motion for it because I was not on any side. So short of that, I don't know what else to do besides adjourn. Mr. Belcher? Okay.
Hang on. This is out of order. We've already voted. You can't bring it back up and let somebody...
That's exactly what I'm saying.
I can't make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Second, Mr. Strong. Kathy?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Holmes?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
No.
Mr. Belcher?
No.
Mr. Strong?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.